To tonight's meeting, good evening. Would everybody please stand and join Mr. Lester for a prayer and then follow that by the pledge of the flag?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you'll join me in prayer. God of creation and God of salvation. In the beginning, your spirit moved over the waters and you created the heavens and the earth. We give you, we give you thanks that your spirit was present over the waters of the chop tank last Thursday when one of our own Talbot County Waterman Phil Jewell fell overboard into the icy waters and the distress call was heard by other watermen who responded and alerted our emergency services. We give you thanks for the successful rescue, for the life saved, and for all those who responded in the critical short time. We give thanks to all of those who are saving lives in our community. Those watermen, the volunteer firefighters, including the marine units of Tillman and St. Michael's, our EMS personnel and 9/11 dispatchers, but also too our immunizers and COVID testers and contact tracers and those in our health department, all of those working in all fields, saving lives in this, in this community. In our gratitude, turn our hearts and minds to doing the work that the people of Talbot County elected us to do, that we may carry it out with integrity, generosity, and justice. Amen. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Appreciate that fine word and, and moving forward. Okay, next on the agenda, council has February 24th, 23rd before them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections on the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. Minutes. Okay, so council has had a chance to review the minutes on February 9th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay, on the next would be dispersments for February 16th and February 23rd. So council has had a chance to review the dispersments for the 16th and the 23rd of February. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments are accepted by unanimous consent. Okay, so first up, we have Dr. McGuire here with us to update us on the board of health on COVID-19 and the vaccines in the clinic. She's working really hard, so, um, Dr. McGuire, are you with us? Dr. McGuire, are you with us?
I see her. There's another guy.
Okay, is Dr. McGuire, are you with us yet? Can you hear us? Okay.
Mr. President, it appears that, it appears that Dr. McGuire is sharing her screen. I saw her mute go off there a couple of times, so hopefully we're getting her in just a moment here.
She did acknowledge she can hear you in the chat.
She can hear us?
In the chat messages, she did acknowledge that.
Okay. Dr. McGuire, are you with us? You can go ahead and speak now. We welcome you. Dr. McGuire, if you can hear us, maybe if you go down at the bottom of your computer, you can click your mute button to on if you can. Yeah, there you go, Dr. McGuire. I think you just come on.
That was me, actually, Chuck. So we, we let us work with Maria and try to get her.
Okay, no problem. Let's, let's, let's move on. Do we want to move on to, and we'll bring her back and we'll move on to the presentation of the Talbot County Agriculture Community, John Swain, the Board Supervisor of, and he's the president. John, are you on with us? How about Shannon, are you with us? From the Talbot County Farm Bureau? An extension?
Yes, Parker, if we can let in Shannon Dill and Sean Smith, please.
Okay, there you are.
There we go. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Shannon. How are you?
Hey, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, there you are, there you go.
Yep, we're here, and John Swain is, is with Sean there at the Talbot Service Center. So I thought I could kind of kick it off and then I'll, I'll turn it over to them.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Excellent. Well, I just like to, oh, there they are, hi guys.
There you go.
Hey, Shannon. Hey, Shannon.
So I just like to thank you very much for allowing us to present from the council. Again, this is just a, I think, an important conversation to have on an annual basis, just to sort of give an update of things that are going on in agriculture. And, you know, I'd like to, to start off by saying that, you know, kind of recapping the 2020 year, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, agriculture was deemed as essential. And we stopped the way we were working, but we continued to do things in the field, we continued our research, we continued our agricultural services. So they look a little bit different now, but I think we were able to use technology, communicate well across all the different agencies and with our farmers. So, you know, our office has stayed open, we're scattering time that we've been in and out. We've been doing telework, we've been meeting producers outside, we've been meeting them in the field. So just a couple of highlights from 2020. We were together in January to celebrate the Talbot County Corn Club. And this year, we continued our samples. We will be sending out a digital link, a video, that we'll be piecing together with the president, with our agronomist, with our National Weather Service reporter, John Swain, and then we'll be also announcing the winners. So we did take samples in the fall of 2020, in and out of the rainfall events. We had 27 corn samples, seven bean samples, and we'll, we'll definitely be getting that out to everyone. You know, January through March, we did our in-person trainings, and then we started and really paused once our telework went in and we revamped a number of our programs to be online. I think one of the most important would be the pesticide and the nutrient management program. Both of those are requirements under regulatory laws, both truly impact the farmer at the farm and field level. So we've been spending a lot of time working on how to deliver that training. We're doing it in large virtual trainings, we have an online self-paced training, we now offer a workbook. And for those that are struggling with technology, we're actually holding one-on-one recordings that people can come into the office and watch. So our winter virtual meetings, we've had 11 of them, we've had over 1,000 people registered. And, you know, when you open it up electronically, people can join from anywhere. So a lot of the work that we've been doing have been statewide events that have been able to connect people, probably where they wouldn't have driven, they can connect online. So we've also, we did some food safety trainings, those have been very important. Beginning farmer, we've had a lot of people with interest in, in starting farms, starting gardens, you know, small homestead type activities. And so we've been doing some outreach and education in that. And then just a shout out to our nutrient management program, over 30,000 acres this year were planned, and this is our big planning season. Moving ahead, we're still trying to figure out what things look like for the Talbot County Fair. In 2020, they had an outdoor movie and a drive-through fair. We're hoping that in 2001, we can at least have our 4Hers be able to exhibit in some type of fashion other than, than just virtual, but we will have that available. And then, you know, Plan Air is our other big summer program that we do, and we are hoping to finalize and finish up our agriculture collection. So stay tuned for that and more information on it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean and John.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Yeah, my name's John Swain. I'm going to actually give the presentation for Talbot County Farm Bureau, and Sean's going to cover the Soil Conservation District items. I'm currently Vice President of Talbot County Farm Bureau, and you guys should have a copy of some handouts that we provided. First one I'm going to refer to has the Talbot County Farm Bureau letterhead at the top, and I'm just going to read through it so everybody viewers can hear what we're talking about. The statewide Maryland Farm Bureau takes pride in being a true grassroots organization, starting at the local level. As unified voice for Maryland agriculture, our members find value in our lobbying efforts and Farm Bureau programs and workshops. Through the past year, we had a membership of 297 total members, of which 196 are voting members. Events we held in 2020, in early March, we hosted the Farm Bureau banquet at Easton High School. That was one of the last events in the county that were held before all the shutdowns occurred. Our annual picnic in July ended up being canceled because of the COVID restrictions. In August, Anna Hutchison represented the county at the state contest, but it was virtual for our, this Talbot County Agriculture. Also, along in through, through the summer, the Board of Directors of Talbot County Farm Bureau did meet several times. We met online virtually like this, we also met in person in the summer at a Talbot Ag Center. We were able to social distance at the picnic tables under the pavilion and had, had, I think, two meetings out there possibly, and then another meeting in the fall, I think. We also done a couple of phone, phone-in meetings, but that's been the challenge with parts of the county with internet and poor internet service. December 2nd was the Maryland State Farm Bureau Convention. It was supposed to be held at the Hyatt in Cambridge, but it was a virtual event. Myself and Jeff Rathel and Teresa Hutchison represented Talbot County as voting delegates. This past week, a week or so, about a week ago, on the 15th of February, Maryland Farm Day in Annapolis, they had their annual Farm Day in Annapolis to meet with legislatures. Again, this was, this was a virtual event. There's a handout, multiple-page handout, it was created after that event with some of the bills that, that Maryland Farm Bureau is concerned about to pass on to the counties. Our, this is items that our district, our state, let's take a fair's person, Toby Ferguson, identified, along with our lobbyist, Mac Middleton, former Senator Mac Middleton, who's also working for Maryland Farm Bureau as a lobbyist now. Other items on the initial handout, we ordered scholarship, we awarded scholarships like we've done in the past. There were seven, seven recipients, Jack Hutchison, Kara Hutchison, Joshua Cherry, Caitlin Cherry, Madeline Salca, and Emma Chappelle. And we will have Farm Bureau scholarship again for high school graduating seniors. I think the registration packet for that is on the county or Farm Bureau website, and we'll make a decision on those later in April. Down on the left-hand side of the Farm Bureau handout is, you know, Eddie Boyle is our current president, I'm still Vice President, Lori Andrews is our Secretary Treasurer, and then the rest of the Board of Directors, Eric Asmussen, John Dapen, John Foster, Greg Gannon, Bob Garrett, Ed Hykes, Travis Hutchison, Jeff Rathel, Keith Shortle, Louis Smith, and Randy Swan. And then the Women's Committee Chair is Teresa Hutchison. That's about all I've got. If somebody has any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
No, John, that's, that's great. Does Sean want to say something?
Yeah, Sean's right here with me. I'm going to move over so he can have the screen.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine. But, yeah, go, go ahead, Sean.
Wait till John gets out of the way, you know, a little bit. There you go. Thanks, John. First off, I want to thank everyone for having us tonight. This is extremely important for us to get in front of the county council, and this is my second year as a district manager, and so I haven't had the opportunity too often to get in front of you all, so I really appreciate it. You may remember my predecessor, Craig Zinner. He recently retired in January of 2019, and since then, I've been at the helm over here at the district. So before I got started on our, on our update, I did provide the council with our annual report, so hopefully you have an opportunity to take a, take a look and see all the good things that we've been doing over the past year. For those who don't know much about soil conservation, I thought this might be a really good opportunity for a quick rundown of who we are and what we do and why we're here. So a little bit of background, the Soil Conservation Districts were primarily created in response to the Dust Bowl of the 1930s. During this time, there was severe drought and high intensive farming practices that contributed to large amounts of topsoil and sediment displaced by wind erosion in the Midwest. So erosion was so extreme that the U.S. government's response was to create the Soil Conservation Service. This is now known as the Natural Resources Conservation Service. From the 1930s to the 1950s, each Maryland county created a local conservation district. Talbot Soil Conservation District was actually the last district to form in 1958. Took several, several attempts by the Farm Bureau and by Extension Office to finally get one established here in Talbot. Each district functions independently under a local five-member Board of Supervisors, which John Swain is our chairman and has been chairman since 2000. It's been a while, a long time. And so there's, those supervisors actually set local policies and procedures, priorities, sorry, based on the unique characteristics of the county. And although the district occupies the same boundary as Talbot County, it's not a part of the county government. So what makes our district as unique is we have federal, state, and actually grant employees that work to promote soil and water conservation principles through a process called conservation planning. And everything from soil erosion to wildlife habitat, our planners and technicians identify those resource concerns, and they provoke best management practices that can be installed voluntarily through one of our many cost-share programs that we offer at the office. We work primarily with landowners and farmers whom we call cooperators. So on page, I believe it was page 11, yeah, page 11, under Agricultural Accomplishments, where each year the district is honored to award an outstanding cooperator, with the Cooperator of the Year Award. And 2020 was no different. In fact, we actually honored two neighboring farm families with the award based on their joint commitment to install several best management practices on both farms. And although we still haven't presented the award yet due to COVID restrictions, we're still proud to announce the 2020 Cooperators of the Year to both the Shortle and Bevan families who operate along Kingston Landing Road just outside of Easton. In 2019, the district worked with both of those families to address a lot of infield soil erosion that actually traversed both properties. In the end, we created a wetland, we designed and installed a wetland at the top of the slope where sediment could settle out before outletting into a newly established grass waterway. This project proved to be challenging to all the parties, and we were finally able to complete the construction before the colder temperatures arrived. The last thing I want to touch on is the erosion and sediment control program. So the, the, one of the things that the district is tasked with is doing individual erosion and sediment control plans for most temporary site disturbances throughout the county. And whether it's for a commercial enterprise or a single-family home lot, the district works with those developers to ensure that all aspects of the projects meet Maryland Erosion and Sediment Control standards that were set forth in 2011. So that's, that's what I have for my update for tonight. And again, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to come before the council, and I wish we could do this a little more often. And if you have any questions about the Soil Conservation Districts and what we offer or any of the services or the functions we do, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Sean. Well, council, we've got three fine people that take care of the agriculture here in, in Talbot County, and we can't do this without them, and we really, really appreciate all the hard work they do through the, through the years. So does council have any, anything for these three?
Mr. President, I just want to remark on how, how impressed I am by the continuing quality work that the Soil Conservation District is doing, and clearly essential work still to be done out there, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think this project, this joint project between the Bevan family and the Shortle family, that's, that's really neat to hear about the cooperation, no pun intended, between those, those two, and seeing how their properties join together and what they can do. That's, that's really neat to see, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Mr. Pack? Mr. Pack, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't get myself unmuted. Yeah, Sean, John, thank you very much, and Shannon, always great to hear from you all and seeing what you're doing. And John, you're absolutely right, I think the last time we had any big public gathering was probably at the Farm Bureau Dinner back in, back in March, before everything fell through. So great to see you guys, I'm still hard at work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. DiVello?
I would just like to thank you all for all of your efforts, and it's exciting to see any organization grow, looking at your, the presentation, it looks like there's Laura Eddie, Ray Geest, and Kim Reynolds, if I pronounced those names right, are three new people that have been added to the Soil Conservation Districts. It's great to see some local people getting on there and some people coming to the area and joining you guys for adding some experience. It's, it's nice to see you growing during a difficult time, and we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiVello. So once again, Shannon and Sean and John, we can't thank you enough. Don't be, don't be a stranger. You can come anytime that you feel that, you know, you want to come in front of council and give some updates and some information that could be helpful for us, so we could, you know, reach out to our constituents and let them know things. You know, we'd be glad to have you. So once again, thanks a lot, guys, and really appreciate all the hard work you're putting into this for us.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so council, let's go back to Dr. McGuire. Dr. McGuire, are you with us now? Can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Hey, you're not the only, you're not the only one, I'm on the phone too.
Okay, good. Well, I can see you guys, at least through my computer. Sorry, my computer's in the saving, so.
Yeah, I can see you too. I can see you too, Dr. McGuire. So, yeah, if you don't mind spending a few minutes bringing us up to speed on where we're at, and I know you're hard at work, so if you could, that'd be great.
Okay, and Parker, do you have the presentation, or should I go ahead and share that? Or can you share that, Parker?
Hey, Parker, did you, did you hear Dr. McGuire?
I don't have the presentation.
Parker, if you can let me share my screen, it's Jessica, I'll show up when Dr. McGuire
Should be able to now.
All right, I see some of it. Okay, do you have it, Jessica?
I think you got it. We're just trying to bring it up.
You can see it, yeah, it's, it's a little bit longer than, you have to scroll down just a touch to see it.
Yep, you can go ahead, Dr. McGuire, and just let me know when you're ready for the next slide, please.
Okay, perfect, sorry. So thank you again, Council President Callahan and the other council members for inviting me to give you an update on the COVID situation in Talbot County. So we can proceed to the next slide. There are essentially two main points that I wanted to touch on, one being the good news is that our rate of cases and hospitalizations and deaths have dramatically decreased since the last time I spoke with you. And the second update I wanted to give is about our vaccination efforts. So, let's see, I'm not seeing the next slide, Jessica. Do you want me to take control, or?
Stand by.
On the left-hand side of your screen, you should see some controls for the PowerPoint. If you go down all the way to the bottom of the controls, you can make it bigger or smaller or full screen at the very bottom.
Oh, sorry.
Make it full screen, you'll be able to see it.
Okay. Sorry about that. You know, a year into this thing, you think we get the hang of it. So, all right, again, apologies. So yes, let me proceed to, okay, so the cases in the world, just to give you updates, we've had 111 million cases globally with 2.5 million deaths recorded in the U.S. The big thing that happened was that post-holiday surge. You can see that here on the graph. Unfortunately, after the New Year started, we've had a significant precipitous decline in cases, which is excellent news. In the, in the U.S. as a whole, we've dropped that case rate dramatically since the last time I spoke. So January 11th, the data showed we had a case rate of 74, and last night, it was 19.4. So, so that is, you know, the number of new cases per 100,000 individuals over the past week. And so that is a really good improvement, not exactly where we want to be, but definitely headed in the right direction. And this is the U.S. Maryland has been following that same trajectory. We've had a 41% decrease in cases over the past two weeks, a 30% decrease in deaths, and almost a 30% decrease in hospitalizations. And I put the numbers from the last time I presented on the left side of the screen, and again, you can see, you know, that day when I presented, there were almost 2,000 people hospitalized in Maryland, and now there's less than half that. So this is, you know, big improvement. Talbot County has also seen a decrease, so this is our new cases that have occurred each day. And so we peaked right, honestly, the day after I presented last time was our worst day. And we've come down slowly with a few, a few hills and valleys since then, but hopefully we're headed, you know, for a more sustainable decrease through the spring. The problem is that we do have these, what are called variants of concern that have been emerging, that are making it a little bit more unpredictable than I would be comfortable with. There are three that have been detected in Maryland. One, and I just call them by where they come from, one is from the UK, one is from South Africa, and one is from Brazil. And the, sorry, the, the UK one, it's more contagious between people. There's also been some evidence showing that it does have an increased risk of death of up to 35%, but the vaccines that we have on the market are still effective against it. The, I apologize, the South Africa variant is not more contagious, but the vaccines do seem to be less effective against it. And the Brazil one seems to be a double whammy where it is more transmissible between people and. And what is concerning is it also seems to lend itself to reinfection. So people who were infected already with COVID have a risk of getting infected with this variant. In Maryland, we've detected 58 of that UK variant.
I'm with her now.
Nine of the South Africa, and one of the Brazil. And what was told to me this morning by the State Health Department was, the majority of these cases that have been detected in Maryland were not travel-related, so they were, you know, infected by people who presumably had these in their system. And the CDC essentially says, you know, the way to stop variants from spreading is just by stopping the spread. So everything that we do to protect ourselves now, the mask wearing, et cetera, washing hands, will help prevent the further development of these variants and others, and also stop these from spreading within the state. Today, Maryland Department of Health just announced that it is ramping up its testing abilities to detect these variants. It's more than doubling its capacity to do this genetic sequencing, and this will allow them to test about 10% of the samples that have been identified as potentially being variants. So that is good news, and that's something that Governor Hogan mentioned on his press conference today. Proceeding through testing, we have noticed since early February, a significant decrease in demand. It makes sense because without, with fewer cases, there are fewer contacts who need to be tested. So for the month of January and into early February, we had offered three days of testing at our Els Lodge location, and we've determined that we no longer need that third day, so we're not going to be offering the Friday morning anymore. We do continue to offer the Wednesday afternoon hours at St. Michael's High School, and that is through a partnership with Chop Tank. And walk-ins are available at that site. And it's recommended you call our appointment line, that 410-819-5632, to schedule a testing appointment. The other sites in the region, the Chesapeake College site and the other county health department sites have also cut their hours a little bit just due to the decrease in test, in demand, and kind of the shift in priority of vaccination. And so each of them are offering about one day a week. However, we have internally decided to develop a more long-term plan for testing, knowing that we'll have to be doing this for several months. And so instead of focusing on more of a mass drive-through style testing, we will be offering something where it's five days a week, almost full day each day, where it's more of a drive-up and we come out to your car, and eventually we hope to get the ability to get a rapid result, you know, on-site before you leave. So today, actually, we just secured a location for that, so stay tuned on more info, but we will continue to offer testing in the county. We are also continuing our contact tracing efforts. I had mentioned this last time I presented, that we are, you know, we've, we're very successful at contact tracing in terms of reaching 100% of the cases we're aware of, and, and that's continuing. So vaccination is really the, the big thing going on right now. In, in the world, there's been about 209 million doses given. In the U.S., about 64 million. Here in Maryland, we reached a milestone yesterday of over a million doses given. And that means that as of today, almost 750,000 people who are Maryland residents have received at least one dose. And in Talbot County, we have almost 7,000 of our residents who have been vaccinated with at least one dose, and 3,400 who have been vaccinated with two doses. So that's a complete series. And this means that of our population in Talbot County, 18.6% of people have had at least one dose, and over 9% have completed the series. And that is higher than the average for Maryland, which is showing almost 12% of Marylanders having been vaccinated with at least one dose. And our goal, as I mentioned at the top of the slide, is really to get about 75% of our population vaccinated. That is essentially what would enable us to return to normalcy. So we are making progress, slowly but surely, not as fast as I would personally like, but we're doing well as a county.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
It's Laura. I'd like to ask a question. Do you, before somebody gets the vaccination, are they asked if they have actually tested positive, or do you already know that?
So we do ask, and what, what we say is if, if you are in your active period of isolation, so if you've been told, you know, you're still sick, and you're within your 10 days of isolating, you really shouldn't come get vaccinated, but anytime after that, you're welcome to get vaccinated. So, so we do ask, there are some pre-screening questions when an appointment is made.
So I, I wasn't referring to when you're active. I mean, they have immunity for at least a period of time, and it, it seems to me like you would want to vaccinate people first who don't have any immunity whatsoever. Since we are so limited on the amount of vaccinations, it seems like they should wait. If, you know, if they're, it's at least three months. I, I think, nobody really knows how long the immunity lasts, but the talk at least several, a while back was it lasts at least three months. So since they're so limited, I just wondered if we asked that question, and if we're not, should we?
Yeah, and so the recommendation formally is you, you have the choice to, to wait, you know, 90 days after your, after your infection. We won't prevent you from getting vaccinated, and one of the things that's kind of adding to the complexity of that is, you know, we do have these variants where you could get reinfected, especially our high-risk individuals who are in contact with COVID a lot, or just have a high risk of mortality. You know, it is somewhat rare, but still possible someone could get reinfected. So, yeah, so that is a good point, and it is generally, you know, recommended to wait that three months, but we won't, we won't turn someone away if, if they, you know, want to get the, you know, the dose and they're eligible. And of course, at, at the current time, we are primarily focusing our vaccination efforts on the elderly. And so you can see in this slide, we are targeting the people who are 75 years and older, and we are making some progress in that age group. So almost 55% of our residents in Talbot County over 85 have been vaccinated, and over 50% who are 75 to 84.
And we haven't, and we haven't gotten yet to people that have comorbidities as far as ill health and not the age. That's unfortunate.
That's right, yeah. And here's the thing, really, when you look at it, our county, our demographics are so, you know, we have doubled the number of seniors in our county than the rest of Maryland. We have quite a lot of healthcare workers, so we have, most of our county residents really qualify in that Phase 1, 1A, 1B, 1C. And so I'd say we're very kind of front-loaded. We have a lot of people eligible right now, and just not the supply that we need. When I look at who's been vaccinated by race, the overwhelming majority is the, you know, non-Hispanic white group. There's various reasons for this, but it is one of the reasons that we are trying to focus on equity going forward. So we have developed an equity task force that is being spearheaded and led by our recovery coordinator, Nancy Andrews. And this is really to reach those underserved, vulnerable, hard-to-reach populations. And so we're partnering with some community stakeholders to, you know, engage in these individuals and ensure that they have equal access to being vaccinated. And our transportation efforts, we're trying to link individuals who have difficulties with transportation by linking them with providers, and even going to their homes to administer vaccines, you know, to individuals who are truly homebound. So those are some areas we're, we're focusing on going forward. In terms of what's been coming to Talbot County, this is, this is our allocation that has been coming to the Health Department. So initially, we started off with, you know, a decent amount, 600, 700 doses a week, and then our allocation did get reduced starting in late January. And for the next four weeks, I've been told that we will, we should expect about 300 doses a week. When I say doses, I'm referring to first doses, and we, we do receive second doses about four weeks after their first dose counterparts are received. But really, I, I focus on the first dose allotment because that is really, that really equates to reaching more, more people. And so as of yesterday, we have received 3,900 doses. The past two weeks, we had issues with shipment, and so those arrived yesterday, and we plan to give them out Wednesday and Friday. So by the end of the week, we'll have vaccinated over 3,900 people through the Health Department clinics. However, you know, as I showed in the last slide, our allotment to our, our Health Department has decreased, and overall, just speaking with our community partners who are vaccinating, it seems that in the past month, the number of doses coming into Talbot County has decreased too, while the number of doses delivered to the whole of Maryland are, are increasing. And, and part of me wonders if we're almost a victim of our success, and that we have a higher rate of vaccination so far. And, and part of this is because the state is hosting these state-run mass vaccination sites. However, those right now are located on the western shore in Baltimore, Six Flags. There will be one on the eastern shore soon in Salisbury, and I'm really hoping we can bring one to the mid-shore because we definitely need these vaccines to come here locally. So who is vaccinating here in Talbot County?
Before, sorry, Dr., before you move on, I mean, that has been something that the county organization has talked about, and that we wanted more to our health departments. And the governor's been very clear that he is moving towards these mass vaccination sites, but I wonder if we might, because we don't have anything yet set up on the mid-shore, and even Salisbury is going to be a hike for, you know, because of the percentage of population that is elderly here, it's going to be much more difficult for them to drive. If it would be something where there may be a subset of the more rural counties where maybe they would get us back to where we are. I mean, I get it, maybe the Montgomery Counties, PG Counties, Baltimore Cities can get to the, you know, they can go to Raven Stadium and do it. But in the more rural areas, maybe the council wants to consider writing to, you know, to the governor to say, you know, can you get us back to where we were because of our demographics and because we don't have a mass vaccination site? If council wants to talk about doing something like that, it is just a completely different circumstance than a larger county. So maybe after you're done, maybe we can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, good point. And, you know, we have good partners in the community vaccinating. You know, the hospital, Chop Tank, and then there's two retail pharmacies in the county. But overall, you know, we have a lot more capacity. With our setup at our community hel, at our community center in Talbot County, we, at the Health Department could easily vaccinate 1,200 people a week. And I know Chop Tank and Shore Health could, you know, also continue to provide vaccines. So my hope is that more supply will come in, or there will be a more convenient mass site for us, because I, I don't think it's something that we can expect of our senior population to travel, you know, a couple hours. On the horizon, there is a new vaccine that will be coming on the market, hopefully, so the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is scheduled to be reviewed by the FDA for emergency approval on the 25th, so Thursday, and that means hopefully, if all goes well in the next week or two, that will come on the market. And I believe, should all go well, the state would receive about 40,000 or 50,000 doses of that. So yeah, that is our main thing right now, we just need more doses. Because of, you know, our population, we are remaining in the 1B phase, and, you know, our, we have about 4,000 individuals still pre-registered with us at the Health Department. And so it will take us, if we can't receive more doses, it'll take us a while to progress through, which is, you know, very frustrating. Right now, our clinic, what we do offer has been running very efficiently. We've gotten a lot of great feedback. Right now, we're offering an indoor clinic, not a drive-through yet, but maybe with the spring weather, we will be able to offer that as well. And it's located at the Talbot County Community Center. We've been very grateful for the, the help of, you know, with using that facility. People have been very, you know, grateful at how, how well they've, you know, worked out for them. We've also started rotating clinics throughout the county to reach some other towns in the county. So last week, we went to St. Michael's, vaccinated 200 individuals there. Next week, we will probably be going to Trap, and then each week we'll hit a different town, just to make sure we can make it a little bit more convenient for especially our seniors who live in these communities. And I want to send out a special thank you to Geneva with the EOC, who's been helping us coordinate this. She's been participating on our vaccination planning efforts, and, you know, it's really been a team effort. And that has been, that has been evidenced no more so than with our call center. The Avalon Foundation and Eastern Utilities worked really hard to work with us to set up a call center for vaccination issues. And I have to say, the Avalon Foundation workers are so enthusiastic, and it's really filled such a need, and we've received such wonderful responses. And we're in very close communication with them, you know, multiple times a day. If there's a question they can't answer, we, we will find the answer. So that is really the best place to advise people to go to get answers about vaccination. It's the phone number here, 410-819-5641. And you can, you know, confirm that you're on a pre-registration list, you can tell us you, you know, received your vaccine elsewhere, you can ask questions, you know, and so that's really a great resource for, for our community, and we're very grateful for that partnership. And additionally, I've listed some of the websites, the covid19.org, our Health Department website, as well as the Maryland State website. And so just in conclusion, you know, keep on, we're going in our good direction, we want to keep up the success, and hopefully we'll be getting, you know, more vaccines to vaccinate more individuals. And in the meantime, keep wearing your mask, avoid the crowds, and, you know, get your vaccine when you are eligible. So thank you so much for presenting, and I just want to also send out a special thanks to all of our other partners we've worked with, Cassandra, the other members of the EOC. I didn't mention anything about schools, but we're starting an exciting testing initiative in the schools. So it's, it's really been, you know, a community-wide effort, and, and I've been really grateful with all the support the Health Department has received. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McGuire. Really appreciate that presentation. That was, that was awesome. You do a great job every week, and we're very proud of you and all your team behind you and everything. So we're, council, we're a little running late on public hearing and stuff, so does, does council have a quick, you know, just?
Very quick, Ms. Callahan, yes, it was a great, great update, Dr. McGuire, and yes, all of our community partners should certainly be recognized, from the schools to the churches and the other organizations to help out. But the one thing I want to highlight is the rotating clinics, while they're, they are so important, is that yes, they do hit the senior population, but they're also, because mobility is still an issue here in the county as well it is on, on the mid-shore. as well it is on the mid-shore area as a whole. Being able to get down into the outlining areas from Eastern also is beneficial to address the mobility issue as well. So yes, it does shorten the distance for our senior population, but it also helps all those people who have an issue with transportation. But very good presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Callahan, if I could, I just have one quick question, please.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Dr. McGuire, is there a master list that you maintain for people to get onto to get a vaccination? Or should they get on a list at the Health Department, Shore Health, Chop Tank, and both pharmacies?
Yeah, unfortunately, there is not a master list. And this is something I wish we could have. But we've tried to coordinate with the retail pharmacies. Unfortunately, for various reasons, they're not able to coordinate with us. We are still trying with the Walmart through the state. Because it does, you know, it's a big burden to ask people to sign up in multiple places and keep looking. And, you know, the, the one good news on the horizon on that front is that for the state-run mass vaccination sites, the state is setting up its own pre-registration list. Apparently, that will be for all the signs. But yeah, unfortunately, there hasn't been good coordination yet on that so far. And I wish we could improve upon that. There's, there's different issues involved in why it's difficult to coordinate those lists though.
The amount of confusion that that causes and extra work on the Health Department is incredible. And I greatly appreciate the Avalon stepping up to help and working with you on that. Otherwise, I don't think that that would be possible to continue operating the way that you are. So thank you very much. And thank you to the other one.
So then to follow up on the comment that I made in the middle of Dr. McGuire's presentation and with what you just mentioned, Mr. DeVigle, that there isn't any coordination. I just think that some of the more rural counties have a reason to reach out to the state and explain that. And also, we could include that, you know, while, you could say, well, you're getting 600 doses, but only 300 are going to you. Why don't you work it out with Walmart or the whatever? There's no way to do that. So, you know, I don't know whether council's interested in sending something, you know, to the state to explain the circumstance that, you know, we don't, until there is a mass vaccination site, you know, within a reasonable travel distance of here, could they consider, you know, sending more to the Health Department, given our stats, tell them there's no way to coordinate with Walmart? And, you know, the worst, they can just say no. But certainly, I think that, you know, I'd be up for, you know, send, drafting a letter and sending it up, explaining our circumstance.
I would be willing to support Dr. McGuire in any needs that she had.
Okay. Mr. Lecher?
Just echo Frank's offer of support there.
Okay, okay. And just kind of keep in mind, council, that we are on, you know, county manager stamp is on weekly calls with the governor calls. And they are fully aware of what's going on. And I, I am, you know, I'll support the letter too, but let's leave that into the county managers and Dr. McGuire's hands to, to, you know, kind of move that forward and take care of these citizens because in our best interest, because we're on the phone. Corey, Mr. Pax on the phone or on the calls every week. So we, we're, we're trying to be on top of this. But, you know, Mrs. Price, I under, I understand your concerns and we're on top of it.
Well, Mr. Callahan, from what I'm hearing from all of my county counterparts and other counties is they don't listen to what the counties are saying on those phone calls. Basically, they're just giving a rundown of how it is. And they're like, we hear you and nothing ever changes. So as far as this weekly calls, they have not been very productive from the county standpoint, from what I understand.
Yeah, I got you. I was, I was, I was on that one last week. So yeah, I, I hear you. So, okay. Well, thanks a lot, Dr. McGuire. Great presentation. Really appreciate all your hard work and we'll, we'll talk soon. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, thanks everyone for your advocacy. It's so helpful to have all the support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, council, appreciate all the good, good thoughts with all that too. I really do. All right, let's get ready to move on to the public hearing. Council will be holding a public hearing for a few bills as the next item for business. Madam Secretary, will you please read the Resolution Number 298 into the record, please?
Resolution Number 298, a resolution designating warehouse and office space at the Talbot County Business Center surplus property pending demolition of the former Black &amp; Decker Building, approving the leasing of such space for appraised fair market value. And subject to certain conditions, delegating authority to the Eastern Airport Manager to negotiate, execute, modify, and extend leases from time to time as the airport manager deems appropriate.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I really appreciate it. Is Mr. Cooper Smith, is he with us? Or Mr. Lecher is to provide some comments on the legislation? Anybody?
This is Tony. Can you hear me?
Hey, Tony. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm happy to speak on this briefly if Mike is not available.
Okay, no problem.
Sure. The, the purpose of this resolution is to cut, cut through a little bit of red tape for the airport manager, Mica, in order to let him have more authority to enter into leases with the various tenants that we have out at the Talbot County Business Center. So before this time, we have been dealing with each tenant who would like to lease space on an individual piecemeal basis. And this resolution would give Mica the authority to go ahead and enter into those leases, subject to certain requirements. And that would include making sure that it's rented for fair market value. Mica has had the property appraised, so we do have a benchmark for fair market value. So, and this would just apply to during the period of time before the Talbot County Business Center building is demolished. So it's only for, say, three years or so.
And so this is Mike. If I could add just a couple things?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we've, you know, the, the, the issue's been we, we get phone calls from, you know, various businesses that want space. And a lot of times, it's for a short period of time, a couple months or something like that. And we haven't been able to move, and we're losing revenue in some regards, you know. So this would give me the flexibility to, if a viable business, legal business in the state of Maryland calls and they need space for a month, six months, or whatever, even, even a two-year deal, we can get them moving, we can get them what they need, and we can do it, you know, without, you know, going through the lengthy process. And we do always coordinate with the Office of Law. We make sure they're a legal business. We run everything through, you know, the county attorney before we make those decisions. But it'll just, it'll make things move a lot more expeditiously after.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. So with that being said, let's, let's now open to, open this to the public hearing on Resolution 298. If you wish to provide comments on this resolution, please provide your name. You will have three minutes if you are speaking as an individual and five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. Mr. Durham, do we have anybody online as, as of right now on Resolution 298?
We do have two people online who have indicated they wish to speak. They are both from the 845 area code, one has dropped off. So we have 845, 521.
Okay.
Please begin.
I'd like to speak on a different resolution. Can you put me back on hold, please?
Sure, we sure can. Mr. Durham, can you put her back on hold?
Uh, uh, we're done.
Okay, that, that's great. So I guess at this time, now we're, no more callers, correct?
That's correct.
That you, okay, all right. No, no problem. Okay. I will now close the public hearing on Resolution 298. Resolution 298 is eligible for a vote on March 9th unless council wishes to take some action tonight.
Ms. Callahan, make a motion that we move 298 to third reader this evening.
Okay, so Mr. Pax, at this time, we can move it to, let's see, we must send, first of all, we need, we need a motion and we got a second, okay?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
You second the motion, okay. Madam Secretary, can you, can you call for, for the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVigle?
Aye.
Mr. Lecher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Pax, just, just to let you know, this, this resolution does not require a third reader.
No, I, I think on that vote, it is passed. Thank you.
Yep, yep. No, no problem. No problem at all. So, all right, Madam Secretary, are we, are we good with that one?
Yes, sir.
And we want to move, yep, okay. So let's, let's move on to, to Bill 1469. If you can put that into the record.
Bill Number 1469, a bill to amend Chapter 11 of the Talbot County Code, alcoholic beverages, to clarify that the definition of theater nonprofit in Section 11-1.1 of the code includes an outdoor theater with the intended result that the outdoor theater could sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises during events under the theater's Class BT on sale liquor license.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate it. Tony, do you wish to, to help us out a little bit and, and provide some comments on this legislation so everybody understands what we're doing here?
Sure, no problem. So as the title indicates, this bill would allow a nonprofit theater that holds a certain liquor license to also be able to sell alcohol at a second location that would be an outdoor location, provided that they go through the proper process to get that second location approved. And this has really come up because of COVID-19 and the need to have more space between people as they attend these different kinds of events. And so that's really what's driving this, as I understand it. So it would just allow this group to have a second location outdoors where they could sell alcohol under their license. I believe Mr. Bond is on this call as well, so he could probably add a little bit more detail.
I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, go ahead, Al. Appreciate you being with us.
Yeah, you, you bet. So, yeah, Mr. Cooper Smith is 100% correct. This really came up as a, as a result of COVID and the need to spread people out and get really good ventilation in order to have events of any number of people. When we looked at what we could do inside the theater, you know, the, well, the governor would allow us to have 100 people in there. When we looked at how that would really work, we just did not believe that it was safe to do that. But that we could actually operate in a safe way if we were outside. And, you know, it, it's funny because the BT license exists because the Avalon had to go and get special event licenses on a weekly basis many years ago. And they, everybody finally sort of looked at it and agreed, this is ridiculous. We should just have a type of license that makes sense for the kind of thing that they were doing. And, and basically, the same thing has occurred again, you know, with the Salt Pavilion. We had multiple weekly special event licenses this fall. And it just creates an administrative burden on everybody involved. You know, hard on the county, it's hard on, you know, us, and, yeah. And fundamentally, what we are seeking is exactly what we already have. You know, our license makes a lot of sense for us. We don't want to run a bar. Yeah, it is, yeah, not central to our mission. Yeah, and this license basically only is, you know, effective, you know, we're only allowed to operate under this license when we're having events. So it's, it is perfect for us. And the fact that we don't have to get a second license, yeah, that was actually something that Tony came up with that I think is, yeah, better for us than, you know, if we were to, you know, hold two licenses, which technically we could. But, you know, this is, you know, a more streamlined process. We do have to go before the Liquor Board, yeah, in order to get, you know, the approval to operate in the second location under our same license. So, you know, the level of oversight that's out there is, is still there. Yeah, and, you know, you know, the Avalon Foundation is a little bit unusual in that 100% of our staff and volunteers are TIPS certified, not just the ones that manage the, you know, concessions, but everybody. And the real reason for that is that in what we do, the people who might not notice the behavior that is, you know, problematic are not necessarily the people behind the bar. Yeah, because if somebody is, you know, acting up in the, in the theater where we don't actually have the concessions, yeah, so all of our people are very aware of being responsible about how they, you know, serve alcohol and, you know, what to do when, you know, when there's any issues. So that's kind of, yeah, our backstory. I'm going to say, I'm batting a thousand today because we are one of those renters at the airport. And, you know, yeah, thank you to, you know, Dr. McGuire and, and Frank and all the folks that, that, you know, reached out about our actions with the, with the call center for, you know, the vaccinations. So that's what I got.
Okay, Al, really appreciate that. And look, I feel like you've been a big part of this and really appreciate your patience. I know you've been trying to get creative. I know you've worked a lot with Tony and council. And that's what we're here for, to try to keep the businesses running and get creative to keep you guys going. And it's been tough on you this year or last year. And I'm glad we're finding a way to, to keep this open for you. So, okay, council, let's see here.
Mr. Callahan, I'm, I'm sorry to interject. Can we go back briefly to Resolution 298? I just wanted to make sure that I understood that we, we didn't move it to third reader. But did you consider that vote that occurred on the motion to be the vote to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, uh, well, um.
That's a numbered resolution. It needs a third.
Well, re, under the, under the rules of procedure, resolutions only require two readings. But when we do a public hearing, we can do, if we want to, a third reader. But set, setting aside, I, I think setting aside the two, you know, second reader, third reader issue, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that that vote that was taken wasn't, I thought I was taking notes and I had that that was the motion to move it to third reader. But I wasn't clear that that was the same thing as actually voting to approve the resolution. So I just wanted to, to, to circle back to that. And if we need to take a vote on the, on the resolution, as it was finally presented, then, then I think we should do that.
I think, I think as a point of order, you're absolutely right, Mr. Cooper Smith. You can't pass it based on the motion that was made, Mr. Callahan. It has to be a motion to pass the resolution. The motion that was made was to move it to third reader.
So.
Okay.
So let's, let, yeah, so, so let's, let's assume for the sake of argument here that we've, we've, you had the motion to move it to third reader. It's now at third reader. Ms. Moran, since we're there, Ms. Moran would, would start to read it. I assume Ms. Price would interject, but we can do that and then there'd be a vote.
Okay. All right. So shall, shall we do that now, Mr. Cooper Smith?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. No, no problem. So, Madam Secretary, could we back up to 298 and then go ahead? And we've, we've taken a vote to move it to the third reader. So could we go ahead and do that, please? Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution... Heavens, no, I would never want to interrupt you, but I ask that so much be considered reading.
Objection.
Okay, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No problem, sorry about that, Al. Okay, so, um, all right, so now the, the, all right, so, um, here we go. Let me get back into my groove, sorry about that.
Mr. President, I think we were, you were just about to ask, uh, Mr. Durham if there was anybody on the phone and, and announce the public hearing.
Yeah, e- exactly, that's exactly right, thank, thank you, Vice President. Um, Mr. Durham, is there anybody on the phone that would love to comment on this or, or talk to us?
We currently have no one who's indicated that they wish to speak.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine, no problem, okay. Um, so, um, at, at, at this time, um, we'll, um, uh, close the hearing. Um, and, uh, once, once again, 2, 2, or 469 is eligible for vote on the, uh, the night, unless counsel wants to take it tonight. And this one here can be, um, is eligible for third reader, but we still have to vote on it first.
I'll make a motion to move it to third reader.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Counselor?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, great, Madam Secretary, could you re- please read the resolution?
Bill number 1470, be considered a reading.
Objection.
Thank you, Mrs. Price. Okay, um, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan, can I ask one question before we move forward on this?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm just trying to clarify, is this going to be one license for both locations? Or will it be, okay, so that's, and I just wanted to make sure, and that's putting a lot on the line, that if something happens at one place and it could, it could potentially shut down both locations. And I, I trust the Avalon, I know that you guys do a great job with the TIP certification, and I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that there is a lot on the line. It just is not, not an easy thing for them.
I got you, Mr. DeVilleo, tha- thank you for that. But, Madam Secretary, could we call for the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Sounds great, okay, Al, appreciate everything, and Tony, I appreciate you, uh, going over that stuff with us, I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much, this is a big help for us.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt earlier.
Yeah. Okay, um, Madam Secretary, could you please, we got one more, um, 1470, could you read that into the record, please, I'd appreciate it?
Bill number 1470, a bill to approve execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement by and between Talbot County, Maryland, Wycomico County, Maryland, Somerset County, Maryland, Worcester County, Maryland, Dorchester County, Maryland, Caroline County, Maryland, Queen Anne's County, Maryland, Kent County, Maryland, and Cecil County, Maryland, and each of the sheriffs for the foregoing jurisdictions pursuant to Section 2-105 of the Criminal Procedure Article, Maryland Annotated Code.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary, I appreciate that. Um, Tony, I believe you're still on the line, and hopefully, uh, Sheriff Joe Gamble, um, might wish to comment on this.
If, if Joe is on here, I'll defer to him, but if he's not here, I'm happy to speak to it.
Okay, um, hey, Joe, are you, are you on here with us?
I don't see him on the line.
You don't? Okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know if, um, I, I see, um, Mr. Stan, did you, did you want to say something? You just popped up, I just don't know if you just wanted to say anything?
So this has been submitted and fully supported by Sheriff Gamble and, uh, in, in coordination with the other sheriffs across the shore. Um, in my conversations with him, he does support it.
Okay, tha- thank you, Mr. Stan, I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Cooper Smith, do you want to add anything to it?
Sure, the only thing I would add was a comment that Mr. Gamble made last time, Sheriff Gamble made last time, which was, the kind of scenarios that he thought might be covered here would be if one county, neighboring county, was having a large event that might require a number of law enforcement officers more than what they have on hand there, then the sheriff in that county could ask Sheriff Gamble for extra support, and he could send some of our folks over there under this mutual aid agreement.
I got you, I got you, I think, Mr. Um, Mr. Durham, I think Joe is on the...
Sheriff, if you press pound three on your phone, I'll unmute you.
Okay. Yep, it's, did you get that? Yeah, Joe, Joe said he was on the line.
Yeah, if you can press asterisk three on your telephone. There you go, okay. You're unmuted.
Thank you, I'm sorry for the, uh, technical glitches.
Hey, no problem, Joe, no problem, I, 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 I know your feeling, you know?
I'm an, I'm an, I'm a 1995 guy living in a 2021 world. Um, anyway, the reason for this, uh, Mr. President and counsel, um, as we've talked about before, is to allow for the proper planning, um, um, for events in, in and around our county and to allow other sheriffs to plan for the same in and around their county. You know, in law enforcement, we say that we plan for the worst and we hope, um, for the best. So this would enable us to do proper planning for, um, different events that could occur or when we receive, uh, intelligence information that something, uh, might be awry in our county or one of the other sheriff's counties, to be able to provide assets to us or provide assets to them. Um, the law already allows us to do that in, in an emergency, but I think this is, gives us a little wider latitude to, uh, incorporate it into a plan as far as planning and not wait till the day of or, or an issue comes up before we can respond. Thank you, I'll take any questions anybody might have.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sheriff, um, for bringing us up to speed and, and, um, keeping us safe and stuff like that and being aware of these kind of things. Um, counsel, I'll open it up to counsel.
Well, just as we saw with Dr. McGuire, it's always important for government agencies to communicate one, between one another, and I think that this is an excellent opportunity to facilitate that relationship.
Yeah, I agree, I think this, this, this gives the, uh, local, uh, regional law enforcement just another tool in the toolbox if you have a large demonstrations or, uh, as, as Sheriff was saying, non-emergency activities in which you may need, um, additional police force to help out with just the, um, management of the situation or crowd control. Uh, this is a great tool to have in the toolbox, so, uh, it helps clear up those non-emergency situations.
Thank you, Mr. Pack, I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Lesher?
Uh, I'm, I've seen these mutual aid agreements, uh, on the municipal level. Uh, they're important at the county level, too, uh, this, this, I have no questions.
Okay, I appreciate it, uh, Ms., Ms. Price?
And I assume that every county that's listed is all doing the same piece of legislation? Sheriff Gamble?
Yeah, that's, that's, um, that's correct, Ms. Price, all, all, all the sheriffs in all the counties are, about half of them already passed, and the other are working on passing them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great idea.
Okay. All right, s- sounds great, I appreciate it. Um, Sheriff, uh, it, um, are, are you good with everything right now? You need to say anything else, are you good?
No, Mr. President, thank you much for your time, counsel, thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Durham, is there by chance anybody else, um, that called in late or on the line?
No, we do have one other caller on the line, uh, which is to speak.
Okay.
This is an 810852 number, please begin.
Okay, caller, could you please, um, uh, comment on this, uh, bill, please? 1470.
Yes, my, my name is Mark Ebersberger, I'm representing myself. Uh, I agree with, uh, this proposal, I, I just have a fiscal question related to that. If we provide, um, resources to another county or they provide resources to us, I'm assuming that will probably involve some overtime related to that. Who would be, which, uh, jurisdiction would be responsible for the extra expenses?
That's a very good question, um, Sheriff, are you still on the line or, or, uh, uh, Mr. Stan?
Yep, I'm still on, I'm, I'm still on the line, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
So it would depend, to, 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 quite frankly, answer the question, it could depend on the event. For instance, Ocean City made a request last year of, um, police officers during their H2O event, um, which is a non-sanctioned event by the, uh, uh, that a group puts on in the city that caused, um, some issues in the city. So, uh, then, so Ocean City was willing to pay, um, room and board, um, and meals, and so it'd depend really on the event and the agreement between the sheriffs, but if it was just a few officers, a few deputies for a half a day, it would probably be borne by the Talbot County Sheriff's Office budget. Um, but if it was a larger scale event that required more resources, we would have those conversations to, with the other jurisdictions to see what reimbursement we could get. So it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all, uh, answer, I apologize for that, but, um, so it could be borne by Talbot County, it could be borne by, uh, you know, by us if we were going to another jurisdiction, and, and the same in return if they were coming to us to assist us. Um, in-house, in-county, we don't charge, um, the town of Easton for assistance we would render them or any of the other police departments. Um, so I think that most of this would be covered under, captured under our budget, the Talbot County budget, um, but in those larger extended circumstances like they had in Ocean City, uh, we would probably seek reimbursement.
Okay, Sheriff, I appreciate that explanation. Caller, does that, does that help you a little better, caller?
Yes, that, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate you calling in. Okay, Mr. Durham, is, um, any, any other caller happen to come in?
That, that's our only caller, the rest isn't speaking.
Okay, okay, so, okay, all right, I will now, um, close the public hearing on 1470. Um, and, and once again, um, we, um, can take a vote on March 9th or we can bring this, uh, to, um, third reader tonight, um, but I'm, I'm going to need a motion and a second to do that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, thank you, counsel, um, Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, um, Madam Secretary, could you please, um, uh, read the, read the bill 1470?
Bill number 1470, a bill to approve...
I was just so about to consider reading of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Pack, where were you, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Price? Come on now.
I didn't...
Since, since she made, since she made the motion, I didn't think she should have to do all the heavy lifting.
I didn't make a monopoly of the whole entire thing.
I got you, okay, okay, all right, counsel, it's before us. Um, Madam Secretary, um, could you, uh, re- read, uh, call the vote, I'm sorry.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, counsel, I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cooper Smith, for hanging in there with us on these bills. Madam Secretary, you've done a great job, I appreciate that. Okay, next thing on the line is discussion of pending, um, General Assembly legislation. Um, I think, Madam Secretary, there is two pieces of legislation before counsel this evening. Would you please read the titles of the bills into the record, please, I'd appreciate it?
Yes, the first one is, um, House Bill 971, Talbot County Speed Monitoring Systems, for the purpose of authorizing the placement and use of a speed monitoring system at the intersection of Maryland Route 333, Oxford Road, and Bond Field Avenue in Talbot County, subject to certain placement and signage requirements, making a technical correction and generally relating to the placement and use of a speed monitoring system in Talbot County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Okay. You want me to read the next one?
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind, please, that'd be great.
I, I would think we would just do these one at a time, they're completely separate.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I guess every, you know, everybody remembers, um, what happened a couple of years ago, and that's the genesis of this, um, I had a call from one of the, um, Oxford Town Commissioners, and I don't know, he said maybe Cheryl Lewis was going to get on, is she on with us? I guess not.
Mr. Durham, is there anybody on the phone right now?
Uh...
From town Oxford?
There are, um, two people that wish to speak, um, I, I can unmute them to find out who they are.
Do you want to, do you want to, you want to say something first, Ms. Price?
Uh, well, I was just going to say, I got a call from, um, Commissioner Jaramello in Oxford, and, you know, he was telling me some of the speeds that people are going through there, um, not just up to 50 miles an hour, but some up to 70 miles an hour. It's, they've got something in place to, um, you know, if there was an emergency vehicle, that it would, it looks like it would get, um, reviewed by the chief before they would send out, you know, a, uh, speed monitoring violation to the, uh, fire truck or the ambulance, but, um, you know, that's, that's a very sensitive area, they're coming off a long stretch of road, um, so I'm okay with it, I'm not usually, you know, sometimes I'm not a big fan of these things, but I think it's just a, can, given the location of, of this, going from a 50 mile an hour to a 25 mile an hour, and with the things that are right there with the fire station, it's not a bad idea.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. Um, Mr. Durham, um, would, uh, you'd like to, to...
Okay.
One of the callers want to speak?
We have a 443496 number.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Cheryl.
There she is.
Hey, Cheryl, how are you?
I'm good, how's everybody doing? We just had to shut our meeting down real quickly to jump on yours.
Okay, thank you, thanks a lot.
I, I appreciate you guys looking at this, um, this is a, a legislation solely to do one thing, which is to allow us the possibility of having a speed camera in Oxford. We are unique in that we are a highway road to nowhere, so once you hit the 25, you can never go any faster or go anywhere, anywhere else besides the water. Um, we did, uh, take several steps, including the installation of a speed awareness sign over a year ago that was actually based on funds that were raised and on behalf of these. And, um, you know, even though people are aware that they're speeding today and yesterday, at last I checked, which was at 5 o'clock, we've had six speeders today and six yesterday that were going well over 50 as they're driving past the Latitude Restaurant. Uh, it, there's no reason for it, the, there is now sufficient warning from the state that starts back at the Oxford Cemetery, they've put up a speed reduction sign, they've lowered the speed outside of town. Um, we thought we would be able to curb some of this behavior, but I have speeds clocked as high as 75 and 80 miles an hour coming into town on, on this sign, which now actually does retain this history for us. And although we don't expect this will ever be a fund, funded project, we feel like we will have to subsidize it because we don't have the volume of traffic, we feel it's important to be able to curb this, this one behavior because it is such a danger. The fire company and the community center sit right there within a few feet of where this speed sign, uh, the radar would be. Um, people travel in Oxford by foot, I've seen every commissioner on, and every person on this council traveled this town by feet, and you understand that the day... and you understand that the dangers that do exist. So all we're asking really is a letter from the county supporting this this initiative um so that when we get in front of the legislature, you know, we can have a a good front. Um we've we're we're working with the state on other mitigation on the road and but we feel like this one thing does does change people's behavior because it's a financial change. I can answer any questions you have about the process or how it's managed um or what the legislation would do for the town.
Well, thank you Cheryl, I really appreciate that, um I I couldn't agree with you more. Um council, do you have any questions for Cheryl?
I I don't have any questions for Cheryl, Mr. Callahan, I just said, Clay, that that do we know if the Traffic Advisory Committee was ever asked to to look at this and offer any opinion on this?
We have not weighed in on it, no sir.
Okay, this this is a state road, so it's gonna be up to the state of Maryland whether or not they're gonna put any type of like traffic reducing mechanisms on this roadway. Um but it kind of reminds me uh back many, many years ago when we were asked uh by citizens down on Leeds Creek Bridge to put um a um an officer down there and and the sheriff did that. Uh and all the people that we caught speeding over the bridge were from that same neighborhood. Um so I I I kinda feel that what you're gonna see is a lot of people from Oxford being caught speeding back into town and getting speeding out of town. So that's something that they're gonna have to uh to deal with uh if they don't slow down. But um you know, I I I would have liked to to at least allow that the Traffic Advisory Board look at this, but since they weren't asked to look at it, I guess it's a moot point.
Thank you, Mr. Pack, um an- anybody else? Okay, so we'll move on. Um thank you Cheryl, appreciate those uh encouraging words from you and hopefully uh things can work out and we can get this taken care of and make it a safer place um in 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 Oxford. So, Mr. Dorm, um I think there's one more call.
There are two more callers.
Yeah, okay.
Four one zero two two six number, please begin.
Okay.
Commissioner Jeremello. This is Commissioner Jeremello, I was just calling in. Uh thank you Cheryl for um or my town manager for echoing those points. Um you know, we've had about fifty-five uh five thousand five hundred uh vehicles coming into town over the speed of forty-one miles per hour in a twenty-five more hour mi- mile per hour zone. Seven hundred and sixty-two of them were fifty-one, um between fifty-one to seventy-five miles per hour zone. So obviously, we're we're very concerned about that. And to uh to council member um um Corey Pax's point, um you know, we we understand that this is a state road and it's gonna be a state issue. But you know, it look, if it's if the Oxford residents are um the ones speeding, any, I'm gonna do anything I can to keep our town safe. And uh you know, we've seen several issues where, you know, we we lost somebody two years ago. Uh that was that was hit um by a youth speeding. Um and you know, we have Oxford Kids Camp in play and we have all these different programs during the summertime uh and having people speed through there, it's a major concern and not only to our youth, but to our citizens as a whole as well. So I ask that you guys definitely uh send a letter of support uh to Annapolis with this piece of legislation that is sponsored by Delegate Mounts. Um and I appreciate your time.
Can I ask your commissioner, can I ask your question? Do you have any data on a number of traffic stops uh either the sheriff's office or MSP has made on that roadway over the last year?
I will get that information or I'll have Cheryl get that information from our chief of police.
Okay. Thank, thank you commissioner, I appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Okay, um Mr. Dorm, we got, do we have one more?
Um we we do not.
Okay, council, um so uh I guess.
Would you like a, would you like a motion to send a letter of support for Delegate Mount's legislation? HB nine seventy-one?
What's council's preference?
He was like, of course, forward.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Ma- Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I'm staying at this time.
Okay, let's move on, Madam Secr- Madam Secretary to the the next the bill, please.
The next bill is Senate Bill number six twenty, Income Tax Subtraction Modification for Volunteer Fire, Rescue or Emergency Medical Services Members, Active Status Points for the Purpose of Altering Under Certain Circumstances, Certain Service Requirements for a Subtraction Modification Under the Maryland Income Tax for Certain Volunteer Fire, Rescue or Emergency Medical Services Members, Providing for the Application of This Act and Generally Relating to a Subtraction Modification Under the Maryland Income Tax for Volunteer Fire, Rescue and Emergency Medical Services Members.
Would you like a little bit of an explanation on this one coming? Uh I think Senator Eckert sent this over to us to look at.
Yeah, yeah, sure, Ms. Price.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, we took this up at Mako and typically on a subtraction modification, what's happening is you're reducing someone's income so that ultimately the county receives less income tax revenue. A county position typically is to oppose it with a statement that we've had for the last three years and say that we believe they should give a state tax credit instead so that it doesn't affect the revenues of the county. However, on this one, we ended up taking no position and here's why. The the and actually, we've already done this and Mr. Stamp will know exactly what we're talking about. We did something a couple of months ago where because they weren't able to have as much fundraising efforts, they might not get the service hours and we wanted them to do their active status. So point being is the county already has the ability to do this. Um Mako took no position because there's so very little financial impact that we just stayed out of this one. But typically on all subtraction modifications, we oppose it with a letter again saying we should, you should have a state tax credit. Um I think we can go either way with this one. Um it's, what it's going to do, if it passes, it's going to require all twenty-four jurisdictions to offer such a thing. For Talbot, we already do it. Any county already has the authority to do this. So if we support it, I mean personally, we've already chosen to do it, I think it's a good thing, especially in this, you know, time of COVID, not being able to do all their service hours. But if this passes, it would require every county to offer this. So we already do it. Um I don't know that we need um to take a decision because typically we also like legislation that is authorizing rather than mandatory. If this passes, it will be mandatory for every county. For us, it's irrelevant, we're already doing it.
Thank you, Mrs. Price, that um that's a good explanation. Council, what's what's council's uh thoughts?
Well, that's exactly right, I mean, you you should, I mean, this should not be something that should be mandated upon the counties to do. They should do it just because it's the right thing to do. We've already done this here in Talbot County by issuing those tax credits to our um emergency responders. I think those councils, those counties of uh reasonable-minded individuals would do likewise without a mandate from the state.
So so Mr. Pack and Ms. Price, just you know, point of clarification, if I might. So the action that council took last year was addressing um the retirement system that this county has put in place for our volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel. And every year, our firefighter EMS personnel in order to qualify has to attain so many points.
Correct.
To get an active year. And because of the COVID pandemic, they were not able to do that. And you took action to allow them to use uh two thousand nineteen as a base uh to basically give people that are still actively supporting the fire company an active year. And that addresses the retirement system that this county has put in place for our volunteer firing EMS personnel. The bill that Senator Edwards, the bill that Senator Edwards put in place actually addresses the tax uh the tax benefit that volunteers enjoy. It was three thousand dollars a year, um it may have been moved to five thousand now. If there is a declared public health emergency, and this is addressing the COVID, that um they would not have to achieve a separate and parallel point system that's a state point system that's submitted to the state. They have to achieve certain number of points in order to get this tax subtraction. And it is different than what we do for the county in the retirement program. This is a separate point system that they have to submit to the state for the income tax subtraction. So it is really separate. Um and so what the state is doing is following suit. What this county did, and many other counties for the retirement system, if they're following suit, and that this is for the three thousand dollars, which may be five thousand dollars now, tax credit for volunteer firemen in uh in Maryland.
Okay, so we still have the authority to do it. Um this still would be a mandate, so we have the ability, from the way it was explained, to do so and maybe we do need to take additional action and we can have that conversation. So the question is not whether we want to do it, the question is whether we think that this should be a state mandate or not.
Right, we're looking for support for the bill, but the bill passes on that that point system that is statewide, they would be basically given a gratis year. The active firefighters would not have to achieve those points, they would get an active year. They would get the normal three thousand dollar or five thousand dollar subtract subtraction that they normally get, they would get because of the COVID, and it would be statewide. And and Talbot's being asked along with other counties whether they would support that um under a public health emergency, which is dealing with COVID right now, to support giving the firefighters that subtraction this year if they weren't able to make their point.
Right, so as a county organization, Mako decided to stay out of this one um because if if a county chooses to do so, they can. Um but we did not, we did not oppose it, normally Mako would have opposed it. We decided to stay out of it because we typically are not gonna support legislation that takes, um we support state tax credits as opposed to subtraction modifications. And I could spend ten minutes on that, but um you know, this is the state making a decision to take money out of the income tax revenues for both the state and the county where the state does have the option to do a state tax credit instead. If the state is making this decision on a state, you know, point system, then the state should be offering the state tax credit and the county can do what it wants to do for county tax credits. This is a standard position that counties have taken for years that when the state comes up, I mean, there's usually dozens and dozens of subtraction modification bills every year. And we oppose them all saying they should be state tax credits, not subtraction modifications. If that makes sense.
Well, council, I I think it, I think it's gonna be extremely important, it sounds like between listening to Mrs. Price and, you know, getting clarification on some of the things about the local fire departments um here with with Mr. Stamp. Um I think we probably should do the right thing and support this um with a a letter of support at this time.
I I would be willing to support this as well. I think it it kind of puts an emphasis that the state needs to be aware of their their actions when we go into these emergency situations uh and the outcome of it. And this, anytime that you are telling individuals to stay home and not do the continuing education credits and and it affects their retirement because they're not doing it or their the the tax op- or their taxable income from it. Um I I really think that when we look at our volunteers, a little bit of state and I think that it's it's important that we do support the volunteers and I think it, this would send an action to the state to let them know that when they're going into any kind of emergency situation, COVID, when we're preparing things like that, there is an economic impact as well and they, I think by supporting this, it will help reiterate that.
I think.
The the bill does have a su- some sunset provisions in it, since it's not uh in perpetuity, I I feel more comfortable to support it uh since it's not something that will be ongoing, so uh I guess I'm I'm pretty supportive.
I I agree with Mr. Pack on that point.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood the difference between, you know, the the state could do this all on their own. Um I'm not saying one way or the other, this was just, this this particular bill was different and it's one that that we stayed out of because for this very reason.
Same.
But the but the good news is it doesn't undermine the county's ability to provide other relief to the volunteer fire companies. We were concerned would undermine what we've already done, which I, which we talked about at the beginning.
All right, I um, I appreciate that, Mrs. Price. I just wanna make sure the perception um that our volunteers in our county, that the perception of this council is looking out for their best interest. So that I, that's the impression that I wanna make sure they understand. Okay, um let's see here now.
So I'll make a motion that we support.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Staff will prepare the letters on behalf of council.
Okay, th- thank you, uh Mr. Stamp. So um thank you, Madam Secretary, I appreciate it, good job, Madam Secretary. So um up next is uh of our county manager report and I know he's eager to get get going on this, thank you.
Thanks, Council President, member of the council. Um first item I have are board and committee appointments. The first is to the Emergency Services Advisory Board requesting the appointment, reappearance of a long-serving uh member of our volunteer fire service, Richard Smith, uh to this uh his committee.
So move.
Second. I've got a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo? Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item is Regional Behavioral Health Advisory Committee requesting appointment of Tim Haynes and Sharon Dundin.
So move.
Second. I got a motion in second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I have is the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors recommending the appointment of Sharag Phoenix Senior.
So move.
Second. I've got a motion in second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I have, council, I'm asking your consideration um in recommending that council meetings remain in a virtual format through the end of March at the recommendation of Talbot County Health Officer Dr. Maria McGuire.
Motion. So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second, Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item I have is a request of letter of support from the Historical Society of Talbot County's grant application for a feasibility study of their properties at eighteen West Street and twenty West Street. Um they're requesting a letter of support for this grant application to preservation Maryland, have a feasibility study done on their properties, there are no county funds required.
I'm all for the letter of support.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Okay, we got a motion in a second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you very much, uh council. The next item I have, I have your county engineer Ray Clark here with me. Uh and he's available to discuss this further, but he has a request from the Department, I have a request from the Department of Public Works, the department would envision the envision the chop tank to submit a grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for a green infrastructure grant for the design and property acquisition. for the Black Dog Alley Capital Project. And again, Ray's here to add some more detail and is available to answer any questions. Ray?
Yes, basically, this is for Black Dog Alley, and we're looking at about, I guess, a quarter of a mile of, let's say, design and land acquisition for a two-stage ditch. So it would enhance the environmental, I guess, cleaning of the water during storm events through the two-stage ditch.
More ditches, sorry, Ray. Move.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do I have a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I got a motion in the second.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The final item I have is I have Warren Edwards here with us. This is a request from the Rose Department to sell repurposed material under the temporary use certificate for the repurposing facility pilot project. So we specifically requested council approval to allow the Rose Department to sell repurposed material under this temporary use certificate issued by Talbot County Planning and Zoning and to complete processing and sale of remaining material on that site.
Okay, council, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in the second to use the temporary selling some of the materials on the grounds there he's got. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Thank you, council. That concludes your county manager report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Appreciate it. Mr. Durham, we've got public comments next. So is anybody on the line?
We do have several people on the line. And if you desire to speak, please press hounds, excuse me, asterisk three on your phone to indicate you wish to speak. Our first caller, who already spoke this afternoon on the mutual aid agreement, please begin.
Caller, could you please say your name and where you're from, please? Caller, are you with us?
Okay, that caller had already spoke on the mutual aid agreement. I'll go ahead and move on to the next one. Our next caller is from the 845-988. Please begin.
Caller, could you please say your name and where you're from, please? Caller, can you hear us? Do they need to press something in three?
No, they're unmuted. This caller's from... There you go.
Oh, okay. We got you, caller. Your name and where you're from?
Hi, is this general public comment at this point?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, great. Hi, this is Eliza Connor. I'm calling from Easton. And I'm just calling in... Hi, thanks for having me, everyone.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm just calling in to comment on my support for the removal of the Confederate statue on the county courthouse lawn.
Okay, okay, Ms. Connor. Well, we appreciate you supporting that and appreciate you calling in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next caller is 410-979. Please begin.
Caller, could you say your name and where you're from, please?
Hi, my name is Henry Hurd. I've talked to you guys before. I'm from Maryland.
Uh huh.
All right.
Go, Mr. Hurd. Go ahead.
I just wanted to call again to talk about the efforts to remove the Talbot County, or the Talbot Boys statue on the courthouse lawn. I did notice that there was comments from Ms. Price, an open letter about the removal. And on those comments included that no one came forth with funds for the Union statue, which is false. And I sat in front of you guys and offered to pay for it free to the county. I just asked what I needed to do next. And a lot of the problems seem to be whether or not we should, if it's, we should pay homage to history or not listen to apparently our fellow county members and how this statue makes them feel. I'm not really sure why moving a monument is changing history and why that means more to this council than the thoughts and feelings of the minority members that constantly ask just to be recognized. So again, I'm just here to say that, yes, we want that monument removed, and there's plenty of people that support it. Thanks.
Well, thanks a lot. I appreciate you calling in and give us information. And we'll take a look at that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is a 443-783 number. Please begin.
Okay, caller, could you say your name and where you're from, please? I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, council. This is Chad Hill calling, and I'm from Easton.
Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, council. I appreciate the opportunity to connect with you all this evening. Sadly, the iconic symbol of white supremacy remarkably remains on our courthouse lawn. The inaction of the council in regards to moving the Talbot Boys statue continues to be so disappointing. This really isn't complicated. The statue must go. Here's something to consider. At a neighborhood in Easton where I once lived, there were about a dozen homes on our street. And coincidentally, just about all of them, including mine, proudly displayed an American flag. Every single time that I drove home, I would notice them. One American flag right after the other, right down the line. I always felt that it added a certain charm to our street. And look, I'm sure you can find many streets in Talbot County that are of a similar pattern. Counsel, here's an interesting question that I was thinking about today. How would any of us feel if our current next-door neighbor one day decided to display a Confederate flag out their front door? Now, let me please make an important distinction. I'm not asking if a person would be permitted to do such a thing. We all know that they would be. Rather, I'm asking you how it would make you, me, or the next person feel. Let me take it a step further. How would it make you feel if six houses in your neighborhood, the three homes directly to your right and the three homes to your left, sandwiching you in the middle, all one day began displaying the Confederate flag? Now, at this point, you might be thinking, Mr. Hill, you need to get some fresh air. Six homes all around me are not going to display the Confederate flag all at once. Well, I don't know about that. After all, isn't that what we're teaching the youth of Talbot County right now? That the Confederate flag is tolerable and acceptable? Actually, it's quite a step further. It's that the flag is to be honored and glorified? Counsel, that's the message, right?
30 seconds.
I know how I would feel if my neighbor proudly displayed a Confederate flag. I would not need to think deeply about it. I would not need to phone a friend to seek guidance on my emotions. I would be mortified. I would be angry. I would be dreadfully embarrassed. Counsel, I believe each of you in that scenario would feel the exact same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for calling in tonight. I appreciate it. Next caller?
Our next caller is a 949-294 number.
Okay, caller, could you give us your name and where you're from, please?
Yes, my name is Keith Watson. I'm from Tillman Island.
Okay, Mr. Watson?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, council members. We could argue the facts all day long about the piece of cold metal that sits in front of the courthouse. But it's not so much the facts that are important anymore. It's the feelings. And it's how people feel about that statue being in front of the House of Justice. And whether or not people can feel justice when they come to that house with that statue in front of them. You see, tonight, when you kiss your children goodnight, you have the opportunity to kiss them, to hug them, to hold them. The people who were enslaved for 400 years didn't have that chance. They'll never know that chance. And those voices who ring out over the centuries should ring out loud and clear. And you should hear them for what they are. And you should feel what they feel. You know, it's interesting to me that the African-American community, to my knowledge, and this is not from me, but this is from them, they don't seek revenge. They seek justice. And that's what they want to see. They want to see justice for everyone. And part of the way that we heal, and part of the way that we achieve that justice, is by relocating our green pot metal friend. Not obfuscating, not erasing history, not insulting the intelligence of others. While we may have policy disagreements, I think we can all agree that we are each human beings. We put our pants on one leg at a time, and we feel. And there are many in our community, I would say the vast majority, who feel badly that that symbol continues to stare down at those who seek justice in Talbot County. I would implore you, I would urge you, please relocate our friend to a place of dignity and respect, but not on the courthouse lawn.
20 seconds.
Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, for calling in tonight. We really appreciate you. Great comments. Thank you.
Our next caller is a 240, area code 240409.
Okay, caller, could we have your name and where you're from, please?
Yes, I'm Suzanne Todd, and I live in Clayburn, Maryland.
Okay, Ms. Todd, go ahead.
Thank you for your time tonight, council. I know how hard you've been working. I'm asking you to relocate the Confederate monument that's on the courthouse lawn. I repeat, relocate, not destroy. The preserved Talbot history signs imply that we want to destroy the monument. But it should not be in a place of honor when it portrays the Confederate flag, a symbol of racism. That's the same flag that was carried by the white supremacist groups at Charlottesville, Virginia in 2017, and recently by white supremacist groups at the siege on the Capitol on January 6. On the base of the monument are the names of men from Talbot County who fought against our country. I've read and learned that some people may have fought on the side of the Confederacy to support state rights, specifically Maryland's rights that they say were trampled on by President Lincoln. Maybe this is true, but do we know for sure? Is there documentation to prove why these men fought for the Confederacy? For most, the lost cause of the Confederacy was fought to preserve the institution of slavery, so the South's plantation way of life could survive on the backs of slaves. Some say the monument must be preserved to educate people. The names on that monument don't educate. Books do that. The idea of the Unity Monument is only a Band-Aid to try and fix the problem that the present statue stands for, that of racism. And the Confederate monument would remain in front of courthouse where equal justice for all is supposed to be practiced? That doesn't make sense to me. As I understand it, the funds are available to move the statue, but a new location can't be found because no one wants it. That says a lot right there. Maybe a group of interested citizens could work together to find a new location. Until a new place is found, I'm sure there is a storage area in the county courthouse somewhere. Again, I ask that the council remove the Confederate monument. The only flags that should be seen at the Talbot County courthouse should be the Maryland flag and the flag of the United States. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Todd. Appreciate you calling in and spending time with, tonight with us. Thank you. Is there any more callers?
We do not have any more callers at this time. Callers, if you're interested in speaking, please press asterisk three on your phone.
Okay, Mr. Durham, so just, I'm going to move down to council comments now. So if we have some callers, jump in. Just let me know, okay?
Just have another one jump in. Caller is area code 845-521. Caller, please begin.
Okay, caller, caller, could you say your name and where you're from, please? I'd appreciate it.
Yes, hello, my name is Edith Knoblick, and I'm from Sherwood. And that's a little village in Talbot County in this beautiful state of Maryland. And I like to tell people that I'm from here, but people from here might not think so because my telephone number is 845. Anyway, I'm here now, and I'm very nervous about speaking in public and on the phone. And I'm really more nervous about talking about local history, being a new person here.
Well, don't be nervous. Don't be nervous.
I know. That's part of my personality, and I've decided I'm just going to throw it out there, and then I can get on with what I have to say.
Yes, ma'am, that's what we're here for.
What I want to talk about today is about the Confederate monument. And I find it very difficult to talk about the monument because of all of the feelings that it brings up on both sides of the community here. And being a newcomer to the community, I've only been here a few years, so that makes me a real, real new person. I see that both sides are so emotionally distraught because of the symbolism and the power of the monument, I believe, is what pulls and makes it so deeply emotional for all of us. And I just feel very... I feel it's my duty from here. And when I say from here, I'm an American. And I think that it's my duty to speak when I see something that's wrong. And the continued support of a Confederate monument in where I call home, in a beautiful town in Talbot County, I have to say something about it. And I'd like the council to consider again to remove it to another place that isn't on the public square. One of the reasons, and when I talk about my nervousness, it's because of the atmosphere that we're in too. I don't think that, I'm from New York, and people are like, you're kidding. You're from New York? I thought New Yorkers were tough, you know? Well, I might be tough, but the hostilities and the division in our country, it's tough on everybody. And I see this here in my new community. I also want to see that...
Yep, if you want to just use some, yep, closing comments, that'd be great.
I just want to say that the Department of Justice has now determined that domestic terrorists are the greatest threat to our communities, and that the Confederate flag is known and recognized as a symbol of these domestic terrorists that threaten our communities. And we should never, ever support or continue to support ideology such as this that are so divisive. I also don't think that any addition can be made to this monument to make it better. I don't think you can make it better. I think to make it a symbol of unity would be to remove the symbol of hate and take... I think to make it a symbol of unity would be to remove the symbol of hate and take that away from the square. So, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your courage of calling in. I really appreciate it.
Okay, our next caller is an area code 410200 number.
Okay, caller, could you please tell your name and where you're from, please?
Good evening, this is Clive Ewing from Easton, Maryland.
Hey, Clive, Mr. Ewing, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
That's good. Yep, appreciate you calling in. Go ahead.
Not a problem, sure. I'd like to express my continued support for the draft resolution for a Civil War monument of both Confederate and Union soldiers on the courthouse grounds. I am not surprised that the Talbot County community has rallied to display their public support for Mrs. Price's proposal. And I hope that the council has taken notice of all the yard signs, the letters I know you've received, the phone calls I know that you've received, and letters to the editor. I'd also like to mention a website that has been created to share contemporaneous documentation from the Civil War period here in Maryland, and also from times 50 years later, shortly after the Gettysburg Battle, 50th Reunion, of how these monuments to the courthouse were originally conceived. It is an excellent resource for folks that wish to read straight from the historical record and not the politicized narratives that we see coming from some of our local media outlets and their promoters. I'm pleased that this website exists to give folks easy access to that historical information. I invite the council and all the citizens to visit www.preservetalbuthistory.org for that information and make their own judgments. And then I have no doubt that they will show support for this important initiative to preserve Talbot history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing, for calling in tonight. I appreciate it.
Okay, our next caller is caller 410443 number. Caller, please begin.
Yeah, caller, please say your name and where you're from, please. I'd appreciate it.
Hi, how are you all night?
We're great. How are you?
Good. My name is Noah Matten. I am a resident of the town of Easton. And I would like to voice my for the removal of the statue. And to follow up on Clive's comments, I believe that there was an extremely informative article that was recently written and has come out in the press from someone who was a resident of our town. And I think it was eye-opening for me to understand the true history of how the statue came about, when it came about. And furthermore, the fact that it is representing something that is not true to our current history. It may at one point in time have represented an aspiration of our history, but in today's parlance, it is becoming a faux pas, I think, in general, to celebrate the succession of a state from a Union that was made more perfect by the Civil War. And I would like to voice that. I would like to the county council to take that into account and please revisit the ability to try to remove or move the statue maybe to a more appropriate place that's not surrounding the halls of justice for our county, because that could be very intimidating to some residents. And I think it would, we'd be right and wrong. And I think that history, it moves slow in the United States, and that's a good thing. And I think we're in a point in our history that we need to move past the succession of certain states from what has currently been our Union for almost 200-plus years. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for my time, and I hope you all will take my comments into account.
Thank you, Mr. Matten. I appreciate you taking the time to speak to us about that. Appreciate it.
Our next caller is an area code 202320 number. Caller, please begin.
Yep, caller, could you tell us your name and where you're from, please?
Sure, my name is Denise Lombard, and I'm from Hillman Island. And I agree that we should look at the facts of history. I think that this is really all based on the lost cause, which is a false narrative of the Civil War, that most historians agree was very purposefully promulgated by Confederate families and soldiers. And this monument went up 50 years after the Civil War. So, if people cared so much about these young men who fought, who I have sympathy for anyone who fought in a war, and I know that all those men weren't killed either, but many of them were, why would they wait 50 years to care about these young men? It was at a time that Confederate monuments were peaking all over the United States, put up mainly by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, to keep the lost cause in everyone's mind as the true interpretation of the Civil War, which was that it wasn't about slavery. The slaves were happy, you know, they weren't capable of anything else. They just enjoyed their lives on the forced labor farms, not plantations that meant tulips it up. The lost Confederacy was all about printing up the Confederacy, the brave soldiers, the Robert E. Lee, the, you know, the Southern culture of, you know, that we want to preserve. But really, it was about maintaining the economy that was based on slavery, and the main people that supported that were owners of slaves in Talbot County and throughout the South and Maryland. Anybody that wants to learn more about the lost cause, because I think it is important to understand history, go to email MoveTheMonumentTC, as in Talbot County, at gmail.com, and we will send you a link to an event on Thursday night where we will have two 12-minute videos and a historian talk about the lost cause. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. Appreciate you calling in. Mr. Drum?
Okay, I want to loop back to our first caller of the night, 410852, to see if they're available. Caller, please begin.
Yep, caller, acknowledge your name and where you're from.
Yeah, this is Mark Ebersberger again. I'm from Easton. And what I'd like to tell you is, last year, I was taking a bike ride, and I happened to end up in Unionville. And when I was in Unionville, I was reading the plaque there and not realizing that there were 18 black Civil War soldiers buried in that cemetery. Now, Unionville is kind of off the beaten path there, but I was really surprised at what I read there. And then when I came into Easton and came to the courthouse and saw the Talbot Boy Monument, I realized there was nothing there to commemorate these black soldiers, some of whom who gave their life for their cause, to fight for the freedom not only of their own people, but they enabled freedoms for the rest of us in the acceptance of Amendments 13, 14, and 15 in the Constitution. But their sacrifice is not recognized at the courthouse, and I felt that this was very unbalanced. So, I wrote a piece that appeared in the Star Democrat, and I was not asking for removal of the monument, but I was asking to put it in its proper context, in historical context. When you look at the monument, it just lists the names of those who fought on the Confederate side. There's no context of what that meant for other people, for black people, for the people who supported the Union. And I wanted to see a context presented for that. But then, on January 6th, when I saw the Confederate flag being waved through the halls of Congress, to me, it finally hit me that this is a symbol of sedition against the United States of America. There is no reason that that symbol should appear in front of a courthouse such as ours. Now, I believe the monument needs to be removed, and I don't necessarily want to see it destroyed, but it does not belong in front of the courthouse. So, I appreciate your time and listening to me, and I hope you will consider that in coming to a conclusion.
Thanks a lot, Mark. I really appreciate you calling in tonight. Mr. Drum, is that it?
Okay, that's all the callers we have currently wishing to speak. Again, if you are interested in speaking tonight, just please press asterisk three on your phone.
All right, no problem. Just step in if somebody called. So, I guess what we're gonna do is make sure my Vice President, Mr. Lester, is okay. And Mr. Lester, closing comments on council tonight?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lester, and I appreciate you hanging out with me tonight and stepping up if I couldn't get here. So, I appreciate it. Mr. Pax?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Yes, as we're wrapping up, coming to the end of February, Black History Month, last, well, last time we were together, I gave an account of Ms. Ida B. Wells, who was a businesswoman from Memphis, Tennessee. She ran a paper down there. She also was very active in the women's movement. March 1913, with Susan B. Anthony in Washington, DC, she attended the march in Washington, DC, but was not allowed to march, and also commemorated the 19th, passed the 19th Amendment by in August of 1920. This coming May will also mark another anniversary in American history, and that is the massacre that took place in Tulsa, Oklahoma on May 31st, 1921. And during that time, the neighborhood of Greenwood Avenue, which was a very upscale neighborhood in Tulsa, Oklahoma, it had shops and restaurants, movie theaters, libraries, pool halls, and nightclubs. And on the evening of May 31st, 1921, a mob came into that district, resulting in two days of bloodshed and destruction. There were over 1,000 homes that were destroyed. There were several people that were killed during this massacre, and it marked probably one of the darkest days in American history. I'm not gonna go through and read the entire account, and you can follow up and read for yourself, but as we remember African American history, we also have to look at those things that were done in the past that really shaped America, and hopefully we can learn from those events that took place many years ago. Again, this May will mark the 100th anniversary of the massacre on Greenwood Avenue, which was called Black Wall Street because of many cops that were owned by black persons who had moved there from other areas in the South and moved into Oklahoma to start a new life there. So, just wanted to make a highlight of that as we come to a close of Black History Month, remarking the massacre and Black Wall Street in May of 1921. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pax. Appreciate that. Ms. Price?
I'm already unmuted. I have nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. Davilio, I know you got something for us. I know it. I know it. I feel it.
Yeah, so, the Talbot Commission on Aging has started to back up again. If you guys remember, that was the group that led me to realize how important taxi service was in the county. It is something that I will be bringing back up again as we're talking about COVID vaccinations and getting around to the different peninsulas and getting our elderly folks in there to get the shots in the arms. I would like to thank some of the organizations that have stepped up to be volunteer drivers for those individuals, and working through the Neighborhood Service Center and through our senior centers to get those shots. So, thank you to the community who's stepping up to drive those folks around. I really do appreciate that. And if you're thinking about different resources in the community, looking for places to donate, right now, the Neighborhood Service Center is in great need. It's a fantastic organization that does everything from pay electric bills to food to doing housing, you know? And with COVID, there's even additional expenses that when individuals have to leave a shelter, if we have to close down the homeless shelters so that because a staff member has COVID, then all those families are going into hotels while they're quarantined. So, that's an additional call. So, this is, it's hitting the community in different areas in different ways than we have seen in the past. So, if you could, if you have time to stroke a check or make a donation, drop off some cash or food, the Neighborhood Service Center is a great, easy spot to do it on Port Street. It'll be very safe and make it very easy and convenient for you. So, I thank those who have stepped up and ask those who would like to to do it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davilio. Appreciate it. That's some great words. So, hopefully, we'll get a bunch of checks in here in the next couple of days. So, council, I'm just going over and just looking at what tonight brought us and brought us to some really good things tonight. We, you know, we passed, you know, three bills, resolution and bills tonight, and it goes from, you know, out to the airport, helping that, to helping the business stay in open. The Avalon is so, so important to Easton, and, you know, and it boils down to helping the sheriff and making sure that these citizens are very, very safe. And there's a lot of things that council was doing right now, and I'm very proud of council, the way they are handling some of these tough stuff, tough issues. And the other thing I want to commend to is our staff, putting this stuff together, making us look like that we know what we're doing. And at the end of the day, you have a staff behind us that really makes us look very, very good. And I want to commend the staff, and I want to commend Mr. Stamp for doing a good job for the last, you know, couple of months he's been on board. And other than that, I want to, I want to go ahead and throw it over to my Vice President to close this out for the night, and Mr. Lester, I can't thank you enough for kind of helping me tonight, just in case I wasn't be able to get online and everything, and because I am on vacation this week, and it was very, very important that I stay in contact with you guys and the citizens to hear all their concerns and make sure that things run smooth. So, I really appreciate it, Mr. Lester.
Thank you. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately turning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, if there are motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene is noted.
So moved.
Second it.
Okay.
Madam Secretary?
Call the roll.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye. Bye.
Thank you, Black Council. I appreciate it. Hope you soon.